Okay, thank you very much. Welcome to the first city council meeting in January. Happy New Year to all. And at this time, I'll ask everyone to stand for the invocation or remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let's put ourselves in the presence of the Lord. Lord, thank you for giving us another year. May this year be a blessed year for the city, for our residents, for people who come over and visit. We ask you to bless all those who need your blessings, those who are of different religions, those who are coming to this country. And bless our president that is leaving and our new president coming in so he makes the right decision for this country. We ask you to listen in the name of whom we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Greedy. Mr. Hanlon, please note that all city council members are present. We also always welcome Mr. Glazier, our Controller, and tonight we welcome Mr. Camacho as our Associate City Solicitor. We'll start with courtesy of the floor. If you're speaking obviously for yourself, you have three minutes. If you're speaking for a group or organization, you have five minutes. Mr. Hirschman, welcome. Happy New Year.
Same you in city council. U.C. 45, we're in Pennsylvania. I see you have Bill Number Three on your agenda for this evening to spend beyond Committee of Hope because there's no numbers, there's nothing. Just an outline of the agreement that was done behind closed doors, right?
Yes, sir. What's that?
What's done behind closed doors, right?
It was done in the executive session. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
When I raise these questions, too, I think behind closed doors. My concern is now, you know, every year I read about the mayor not raising taxes, real estate taxes. But if you read it, you know, what's confusing is that when I was on city council, we always had a summary on how they arrived at the number of real estate taxes we see for the year. It was always a breakdown like, oh, did we receive the summary? But we don't do that anymore in the policy of the year. Maybe after we've already agreed on it the next meeting of the year. My concern is the headlines that you never raised, real estate taxes, what they did. You look at the ordinance in 2015 and one for 2017 shows that you moved to enough. And so I mean to do real estate taxes. My next concern is how did it affect homeowners? I raise it in another respect. I think people of Allentown should know, especially when the mayor tells you you're invading real estate taxes. And my next question is, you have an ordinance, if I chart it, does a two-tier system exist? Does a two-tier system benefit Allentown residents, homeowners, and out? As you know, I think we're the only municipality in the state of Pennsylvania that has a two-tier system. You guys raised a waste tax out of the middle of the joint land. Can anybody tell me what percentage you use? It tells you here, council may establish a ratio. So what is the ratio? The ratio was 4.70 based on building and stuff. So what is the ratio now? How many towns are food that way? I think council perhaps take a look at the land value tax, the benefits to property owners now compared to what you charged us in 1996. Maybe it's costing me more, or it's costing me less. So maybe you can assign committee to look into this, Mr. President, and see if it benefits homeowners of Allentown by getting rid of the two-tier system that we have. That would be good thing. And I want to congratulate you, Mr. President, for serving another term, and Mr. Hendricks for serving another term. That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. Thank you, Mr. Hirschman. And also, when you refer to Bill, Mr. Hirschman, or when you refer to Bill Three, we're going to refer that to Committee of the Hall. We're going to have a Committee of the Hall meeting next Wednesday on January 11, and then we're going to vote on it on January 18. And we will have numbers for you. We will have numbers.
You know why I was concerned, Chairman, because Mrs. O'Callaghan said there's a deficit of 320,000 hours. And I want to see where you guys are going to make up the money to reduce that deficit.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else upstairs on the floor? Effin Trigger, love him.
Again, Effin Trigger, 214 North State Cloud, I'm from the Allentown Tenancy Association. Question, a couple things. Eighth and White Hall, I've called in now five times, they get to be cleaned up. And it just increases as it gets larger as it's done. It's a little wooded spot off the side, and throw it apart, it all goes down the hill, goes along the other guy's property. But there's TVs up and down the street right there, there's tires, there's a ton of waste. For some bizarre reason, it's not being dealt with, unlike most other areas. Secondly, I wondered, we have an ordinance about, I remember only a few people on the board, the dishes, the little dishes. The dishes will be, what do you call it, dirt to make?
Dirt to make.
Yeah, because somebody's house has got like 10 of them on porch. Obviously, however this ordinance is written out or whatever, it's not accomplishing, you know, what's meant to do. If anybody can look into it further and start seeing what we can do about it. A building only has six units, and it's got 13 dishes hanging off the side of the building. You know, obviously, some need to be taken down or something. I don't know what you can do about it, but you keep hearing it's living units, and it's like West Park meetings, or, you know, meetings for male recruits, they're the ones who consistently keep bringing this up. And they may be the past ordinance, well, they passed some ordinance, just stuff, you know, I know it's hard to enforce that one, but I would think that maybe code enforcement, just when they get the building, 13 dishes on a building that's got six units, that's when something can at least be done about some of that. Also, unsecured properties, since the banks are the biggest problem anymore with this, you know, can we increase the fines on them or something? Seriously, and start to make them where they actually can see it? You know, maybe right now, it's at a, I don't know what the fine is, or maybe it's at a point right now that it's just collateral damage to them. Maybe we need to give them something to make them open their eyes and realize they need to start taking care of it, because a lot of these properties are being brought sight unseen by these, especially like, well, Lakeview, even pathetic. 726. No. What's happening with 726? Why is this not being dealt with? And if anybody thinks that them little boards at the bottom there are going to hold that wall up, that's just, that's unbelievable. That building, you can see more and more cracks. If I actually had a chance to print out the pictures, pictures from two months ago to now, there were three separate cracks that weren't there two months ago and are there now. Why do we allow Hall Street to even be open still? Because three people on Hall Street were inconvenienced? Who cares? Seriously. For the betterment of the entire city, Hall Street should be closed for the, you know, heaven forbid we have a blizzard, you know, 37 inches of snow. You think that roof's going to hold that up? Look in the windows of this building, and you can see the ceiling coming down inside of it. I mean, I just called the police two weeks ago, had to go there and secure it. Police had to go inside this building to make sure nobody's there. They shouldn't have to go inside. That building is dangerous. It was tagged, "Raise or repair" almost three years ago. Three years ago. Nothing has happened in three years. And right now, from what, a couple, two months ago, the bank showed up to a hard meeting, and for some reason, M&amp;T Bank is involved, I'm not sure why, but they are involved, and they said that this would be taken care of. Nothing's happened. I get it. They're going to lose money on this property. Well, nobody wants, that's their problem. They bought the property sight unseen. But meanwhile, one of these days, something's going to happen. The longer it sits there, the longer it deteriorates. We said, if you haven't checked it out yet, I encourage you to have, encourage all of you to take a look at the side of that building. Then enough gets you close, and you hear a snap, run. That build, and not that it's all our, we got all our cones and everything, just thrown up against the side of the building all around there, it looks like hell. And also, the mechanic shop on Hall Street right there believes it's their parking lot, I guess. There's like nine cars parked there, they all changed. They're coming from the mechanic shop. So I'm not so sure how he gets away with actually encroaching on somebody else's property. I'm sure he feels that nobody's going to touch the building, since probably buildings have sat that long, but seriously, yeah, I pulled up, Section 220 allows you a right to close down Hall Street. So, thank you.
Can I say something?
Go ahead, Ms. Apple. Absolutely.
Can I absolutely agree with you? You and I have been in contact about this, and Dr. McGuire and myself, and also Ray and Roger, we talked about it today, and I agree with you. I promise you, if I have to do this on my own, by myself, this is a mission I'm on because you are absolutely right. That is going to kill somebody, hurt somebody, something's going to happen there. And there's, we've been trying to figure out ways, and who's responsible, if it's the city that has to tear it down, or whatever we have to do. But I promise you, I'm going to work on that, because you're absolutely 100% right, and Mr. Grant.
Mr. Hartzell. Go ahead, what comment?
Is this a matter, again, are we talking 726 West Gordon?
Yes.
That's okay, because I had passed that along to our staff back in December, and I was aware that it is being scheduled for demolition. I don't know the specifics about it, but I'll find out.
I just think that at the very least, right now, it's not that hard. All the barriers are there, and we're going to back up and put this hall straight down. Who cares that it could be two people? We're looking out for the betterment of everybody, not just two people.
Mr. Greedy, go ahead. Thank you. Do you think we should close our corner of the street as well?
No. Because if you see, if that wall comes down, it's going to go that way. It's not going to be coming this, it's going to be going that way. It's only one, what, a foot and a half from Hall Street. There's no, you know, there's no guarantee room. Technically, in front of the place, you've got a six feet of sidewalk, along with other six feet of where it's not supposed to park, I mean, I'm sure it's to park all the time, but, I mean, it's the wall that's going to come down the side.
If you remember.
It's bowed out, and I've never seen a brick wall bowed out as far as this.
If you remember, when that was discussed here, I asked that they did a, you know, structural engineering study on it, and they said that they did another building with lock page stay, and that's why they kind of took those other values that they had there earlier.
On this one meeting, I heard that maybe somebody brought it back as inconvenience. There's like eight people on Little Hall Street in this.
I was spoken about, you know, somebody spoke to me about being an inconvenience for some of the businesses, some of the people that were in that block.
There's one business, the guy that's parking illegally on.
Well, that's, I don't know the, you know, the procedures of these parking illegally, huh? What I know is that somebody complained about it. And I asked about it to the administration, and they said that they did have a structural engineer come over and do a study on the building, and that the building was sound to stay as it is. Now, things might have changed, that was about six months ago at least, and Mr. Hartzell said that it's on schedule to be demolished, I don't know if it's scheduled to be managed by the city or by somebody else, we know they, we don't know. But we will find out what's going on.
I had heard actually back from, I think, somebody up in building safety the day after the last meeting that we had back in December about this. I would get some clarity on that coming, but they are aware that it is a serious hazard, and as far as I know, they're going to take the steps to demolish it. I just didn't know the timeline or the specifics.
Can we get a report at least by the next council meeting, or where we are on that?
726 West Gordon, yes.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Hartzell.
I just feel that Paul Street closes down is not going to impeach that many people.
Anyone else, courtesy of the floor? Mr. Chime, you making a move?
Okay. I thought so. Robert Dodger, 1920, up on White House, Be Allentown.
Yes, sir.
I agree with Mr. Hefen Trigger. I want to thank Ms. Apple, and Mr. Greedy, and Mr. Hartzell for following up on this, and I hope something will be done soon. I hope something can possibly be done to streamline the procedures for this, because we're not Philadelphia, we're not New York, and it seems like we can, there must be some way to speed up the procedure. And the other thing I want to say, I wanted to ask a very short question about the budget agreement, but I don't know if that's coming up for a vote tonight, or if that's going to be put off.
That's going to be Bill Three.
Okay.
And when we introduce a bill, I asked my colleagues if they had any comments, then I asked the public if they had any comments. It's going to be introduced tonight.
Okay.
And then what we'll do is, I've said to Mr. Hirschman, we'll introduce it tonight, we're going to refer to Committee of the Hall, we're going to meet next Wednesday to talk about it. The street bills, we're going to talk about next Wednesday. Then we'll vote on them, Bill One, Two, and Three on January 18.
Okay, I guess, I assume you're going to make a comment relative to the Sunshine Law, Section 708, about the budget meeting, the meeting that you had?
I, uh...
Yeah, I assume you will, right?
I'm not going to make a comment.
About executive session?
If you want to, if you want to make a comment when we get to Bill Three, you can make the comment.
Okay.
But, yeah, I'm just, we're just going to introduce it.
Okay.
Okay, and anybody else, courtesy of the floor? Seeing none, okay. Mr. Hanlon, approval of the minutes, comment by common consent, colleagues?
Yes.
So moved, okay. We'll go right into old business, the old business. Election of President and Vice President. Mr. Hanlon and Mr. Camacho. Mr. Hanlon, let's go with, let's go with the Vice President first.
Okay, there was a memo submitted as part of the record by Mr. Hendricks for the position of Vice President, and that was the only memo.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Hendricks, would you like to make a comment? And then I'm sure we, we'll vote on this, right? Mr. Camacho? Mr. Hendricks, would you like to make a comment?
I'll wait till after the vote.
That'd be fine, okay. Do any of my colleagues have a comment? Mr. Hendricks says Vice President of City Council for 2017. Dr. McGuire, go ahead.
I'm not clear. Is the city clerk in charge of this, and the questions and so on should be addressed to him or to you?
Question? You can ask, yeah, all questions are addressed to me, and I might push them off somewhere.
Go ahead. I would like to make a move, a motion, that the Office of Vice President be voted by a Committee of the Hall, all in favor of Mr. Hendricks.
Say that again. Committee of the Hall.
Meaning, all of us now vote unanimously seven-nothing in favor of Mr. Hendricks.
That's his motion, is that, that's a motion?
Yes.
Suspend the rules, you suspended the rules for a motion?
Yes, sir.
I, I, I would like to have an individual voice vote.
Okay, I withdraw my motion.
I think it's more concrete. Okay, thank you, Dr. McGuire. Any other comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public? Mr. Hanlon called to vote on Mr. Hendricks as the Vice President of Allentown City Council for the year 2017.
Go ahead, Ms. Apple.
Yes.
Mr. Greedy.
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. McGuire.
Yes.
Ms. Moja.
Yes.
And Mr. Brown.
Yes.
President of City Council.
Okay, now, Mr. Hendricks, go ahead.
Thank you. I just, at this time, want to thank my colleagues for their confidence in my service in this capacity. I thank them for their vote. I thank them for their hard work over the past year, one which was extremely difficult at times, and their expected participation and service in 2017. One of the things that I will be pushing for this year, and hopefully in the very near future, is to enact the component, the Speak Up Allentown component, which is part of the Granicus system, in furtherance of our, of my concerns and my willingness and want to expand transparency in government. This will allow the public to make any comments they want to make on a variety of topics of which you can pick, or which we may ask for your input on. And again, I think with almost Granicus now being open, and the system and the ability to watch these meetings to the public and over the live streaming, this will only expand transparency in your government, something I feel very strongly about, and I will serve the public with the utmost integrity, as I have been and continue to do so. I thank you all for your support in this.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. Mr. Hanlon, read the memo for the President.
Okay, now we have a memo for the President from Mr. O'Connell.
Thank you, sir. Any comments from my colleagues? I will wait until the vote is taken.
I was always taught if you didn't have anything good to say on the same day.
You guys, I love that. Any comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public? Mr. Hanlon called to vote on the President.
Okay, I'll go back to Mr. O'Connell as Council President. Mr. Greedy.
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. McGuire.
Yes.
Ms. Moja.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell.
Yes.
And Ms. Apple.
Yes.
President of City Council.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. McGuire. I just want to, again, I thank my colleagues for the support and confidence in me for just being my third year as President of City Allentown City Council. This is my eighth year on Allentown City Council, and three years as President. I enjoy city council. I care deeply about the city, I love the city. City has come through some troubled times over the last year and a half. Hopefully, it will come to a conclusion very, very shortly. I've been a public servant for 46 years, 38 years with the Allentown School District and the City Council. So I've been a public servant for 46 years, and I'm only 55. So I started pretty young. More than half, more than half, but I just, you know, there's sometimes you come to a meeting, and you know it's going to be a tough meeting, and you just, you're working through, you listen to the people, and if the people, if the people come out and they know someone's listening, and we can't solve everything at a meeting, or two meetings, or three or four meetings in a month. But if you come out and you have a concern, you know, we try to take care of that concern. And it's been an enjoyable three years. Like I said, and I've been redundant, I love this city. I care very deeply about this city. The city is resilient, very resilient. The city is very diverse, very diverse. That's positive, that's good things about this city. So, again, I thank my colleagues for their support this year, and I will move forward with the meeting. Communications, anyone have communications, any of my colleagues?
This one.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Greedy.
Two years, you say three.
I did, you could, yeah, I did say, and I did say I was only going to...
You just want to catch up to me.
I did, I did say I was only going to do it for two years. But under the circumstances that we're facing in the city, I'm going to give it one more year. And then, and then we pass the gavel to whoever wants it. Give me that gavel. I don't use the gavel, but I did say two years, and I, yeah, I had my fingers crossed already. That, I like that, that was a good one.
That was a good one.
Reports from committees, I'll start with the Committee of the Hall. Council will have a special council meeting on January 11 at 6:00 p.m. to review the three bills, Bill One, Bill Two, and Bill Three, introduced this evening, and we'll, I think we're going to start that meeting, Mr. Hanlon, did we say 6 o'clock?
Yep.
We'll start that meeting at 6 o'clock, so put it on your calendar. We'll go right to Budget and Finance. Mr. Greedy, Budget and Finance.
The committee has not met since the last council meeting. The committee has a meeting scheduled for January 25 at 6 o'clock p.m. in council chambers. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Community Economic Development, Dr. McGuire.
No meeting, and none currently scheduled.
Thank you, sir. Human Resources Administration appointments, Ms. Apple.
We do have a few, are they now, or just?
No, we'll do them when we get the appointments.
Okay. We don't need to schedule them.
Okay. Parks and Recreation, Ms. Moja.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee has not met since the last council meeting. A future meeting has not yet been scheduled.
Thank you, Ms. Moja. Police Safety, Mr. Hendricks.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee has not met since last meeting, and at this time, there are no future meetings planned.
Thank you, sir. Public Works, Mr. McLean.
I will echo that, we have not met since the last council meeting, but I will also say that this committee doesn't sit around, we have a meeting scheduled for January 18.
Very important meeting, we're going to be talking about our favorite topic, parking meters.
Parking.
Yeah. Put that on your calendar. Rules, Chambers, and Development Relations Strategy, I'm the Chair of that committee. The committee has not met since the last council meeting, a future meeting has not been scheduled. Mr. Glazier, do you have a Controller's Report this evening?
I do, and I've been saving it up also.
Okay, that's good.
Just to say that the Controller's Office audited the golf course, the pro shop inventory at the end of the year, and everything was fine, there were no findings of any irregularities whatsoever.
That's it? Thank you, sir. Very good. Appointments, Ms. Apple, we have a few appointments tonight, I think we have four.
Yes, we do. We want to start with...
Let's start with, let's start with Human Relations, and we'll save David Mickelberger for last.
Oh, okay, I have to change the page. What did you want to start with?
Shante Johnson.
With who?
Shante, I believe Shante Johnson, that's the name?
Yeah, that's where I was going to start.
Human Relations, go ahead.
For the Human Relations Commission, Shante Johnson. She will replace Robin Riley Casey, who did not wish to do another term. Do you have any comments from, from my colleagues?
No.
No? From the public? Is Shante here?
Let's when you take a vote.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Shante.
Okay, we'll take a vote, hold on, Shante. We'll take a vote on Shante Johnson, Human Relations Commission, her term expires January 1st, 2018. Human Relations Commission, Shante Johnson, let's call a vote.
Okay, on the appointment of Ms. Johnson, Ms. Apple.
Yes.
Mr. Greedy.
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. McGuire.
Yes.
Ms. Moja.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
President of City Council.
Okay, congratulations, Shante, would you like to come up and say something?
Hold on, I'll say a few words.
Ms. Johnson.
Glad to have you aboard.
Thank you, thank you.
I like that name, Shante, that's right.
Thank you. My father picked that out, he was a Marine and a Vietnam War. You were my principal at Trump.
Yes, I was. Yes, I was. Yeah, yes, I was. They always kid me, I was everybody's principal. I was even Dr. McGuire's principal.
Oh, wow, okay.
Oh, okay, no, you're good. No, I remember Shante, I remember you well.
Yeah, thank you.
Marine, Marine, good for you. Congratulations for serving.
Yes, thank you, well, not me, my father, but, yeah.
Your father.
My father, yes. You know, thank you for choosing me. I do have a passion, you know, for the city of Allentown, I've been here pretty much all my life, and I definitely am committed to trying to help the city get a better place, you know, trying to help the issues, civil rights and, you know, discrimination that come up, so I'm very thankful.
Thank you, Shante. Glad to have you, and thank you for volunteering.
Thank you.
All right.
Ms. Zappa, let's go to our second one.
Environmental Advisory Reappointment, Michael Resonan?
Resonan.
Resonan? That's how you pronounce it. Environmental Advisory Counselor. Do I have any comments for my colleagues?
Yeah, this is just kind of a reappointment because he was, we appointed him last time, but there was a, they had your term expiring for like on January first.
A week later, yeah.
A week. He got appointed and a week later it expires. It was, we're gonna blame that one on the mayor's office.
Any comments?
But this is like an extension.
Anything from the public? We have a vote, Mr. Hammond.
Okay, on the motion to appoint Mr. Resonan to the EAC Board, Mr. Greedy.
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
McGuire.
Yes.
Ms. Moda.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell.
Yes.
Ms. Zappa.
Yes.
President of seventy-eight and eighty-eight.
Michael, welcome, welcome back.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to briefly express my gratitude to the council for appointing me to the Advisory Environmental Advisory Council. Spent eight years trying to get back to Pennsylvania. I can't think of a better city than Allentown to finally come back and make my, take my home in Pennsylvania again. My wife and I have loved Allentown since we've moved here. I don't think a week has gone by since we've moved here, one of us or both of us haven't said something that we're appreciative of, of, you know, of living in Allentown. I think the Environmental Advisory Council works on issues that are affecting everyone in Allentown, young and old, and something that's very important to me. And I feel very privileged that you've, you have the opportunity to work on these issues and I just wanna thank you for that.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Again, thank you for volunteering and serving.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, Ms. Zappa, number three.
Number three. This is a reappointment, Ms. Henlocker, to the Environmental Advisory Council. Do, her term expires one, one-twenty. Do I have any comments from my colleagues? Anything from the public? Can we call a vote, Mr. Hammond?
Okay, on the appointment to the EAC, Ms. Henlocker, Mr. Hendricks.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. McGuire.
Yes.
Ms. Moda.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell.
Yes.
Ms. Zappa.
Yes.
Yes.
President of seventy-eight and eighty-eight.
Is she here? Are you here tonight?
Okay, number four. We're gonna need to suspend the rules for number four. Number four's not, number four's not on the agenda. So, Mr. Hammond, I make a motion to suspend the rules to put up for an appointment David Mickenberg to NISDA, okay? Second?
Second.
A common consent? A common consent, okay. And Ms. Zappa, you take it from here.
This is the, regarding appointment of Human Relations Commission, oh no, that's, this is for NISDA. I'm sorry, that was for Shante. This was a Pat Brown appointment and expiration is one-one-twenty-one. Is David here? No?
No.
Any comments from my colleagues?
I have a comment. For the NISDA Board, there's nine members on the NISDA Board. Three members are appointed by Pat Brown, our Senator. Three members are appointed by Mayor, Mayor Palowski. And three members are appointed by State Red Peach Wire. And David Mickenberg is an appointee by Pat Brown. Now, David Mickenberg does not live in the city of Allentown, but he is the CEO of the Allentown RBCM, which qualifies him for the NISDA Board. That's my comment.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Go ahead, go ahead.
Meeting, Mr. Mickenberg, various occasions, very wonderful man. He really cares about art. I think he will be a great asset to the, to the committee, to the NISDA Board. Looking forward to supporting him.
I would like to echo the sentiment. I know Mr. Mickenberg. He does a lot for the community. He's very active. And one of the things that I really like about this gentleman is that he gets really involved with the students from different schools. And he brings them to the museum, you know, for free. I like that. Thank you.
You have a comment? Seeing none, Mr. Hammond?
The public, I'm sorry.
I'm curious, why we have to suspend the rules? Why wasn't this on the agenda? To get the case, in case the general public did have something to inquire about. When you suspend the rules like that, the only public that actually gets to say anything is whoever shows up.
It was, it was a request made by Senator Pat Brown late yesterday afternoon. And we honored that request and we checked Mr. Solicitor's office and Mr. Kamash was serving us tonight and they said, you obviously can do this. We can't suspend the rules to do this.
Is there any reason we can't put it on the next agenda? Just, I'm curious.
No.
Because the NISDA already had a meeting today. It's been a meeting for a month.
You make a good point, but I don't want to get Mr. Mickenberg noticed as soon as possible.
Any other questions? All right. Mr. Hammond, a vote, please.
Okay, on the appointment of Ms. Mickenberg to the NISDA, he actually replaces Mr. Guru. Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Mr. McGuire.
Yes.
Ms. Moda.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell.
Yes.
Ms. Zappa.
Yes.
Mr. Greedy.
Yes.
General.
Yes.
President of seventy-eight and eighty-eight.
Thank you. Ordinance for final passage, we have none. Resolution for final passage, Mr. Hammond, read R-ten.
R-ten authorizes the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for operating funds for the city's six and seven enterprise zone, for your enterprise zone program.
Okay. Mr. Hammond, thank you. And Mr. Diaz, welcome. Tell us a little bit about what this grant is for.
Sure.
And, you know...
Sure. Well, good evening and Happy New Year.
Introduce yourself and then for the, for the press.
Sure. My name is Daniel Diaz. I'm the business development liaison for the city of Allentown. I am here on behalf of the city of Allentown's Department of Community and Economic Development to ask Allentown City Council to authorize the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for operating funds for the cities here, six and seven of the enterprise zone program. The application essentially requests a Keystone Communities grant of a hundred thousand dollars for the enterprise zone program. Just to give you a little background as to the purpose of this program, well, essentially, this operational grant will build upon the five-year enterprise zone program by constructing and demonstrating sustainable work processes for its business retention and expansion outreach programs. The funds will provide financial support to accomplish an objective for retaining and expanding manufacturing business already in operation in Allentown. This two-year Keystone Communities program request builds on success achieved in establishing a collaborative approach to visiting and connecting local and regional resources to help its companies and learn about their needs in order to retain and expand manufacturing business in the city of Allentown. In correlation with the city of Allentown's reindustrialization strategy, it recognizes that Allentown is a manufacturing city within a manufacturing region and recommends focusing on expanding business within the city in key industrial sectors such as manufacturing. Key findings, recommendations serve as the basis for defining what we plan to accomplish and the objectives of this two-year enterprise zone program. So in closing, we understand that, you know, manufacturing jobs remain a critical component of the global and local economy and serve as a base for growth. As manufacturing trends rapidly change, it further validates that we need to increase the importance of business outreach to prioritized companies important to the business retention and expansion in Allentown and Lehigh Valley. We achieved some good success over the five years of the enterprise zone program regarding business retention expansion, including addressing real estate, manufacturing space limitations, our manufacturers' needs, workforce issues, key growth, subsectors, and other trends. This two-year operational grant will build upon the successes of those five years by enhancing Allentown's business environment through our strategy to start, grow, and retain manufacturing and industrial jobs and businesses in the city of Allentown with our partner organizations.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Comments from my colleagues about submitting this grant application? Comments from the public about submitting this grant application? Mr. Hong, welcome back.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Hong, welcome back. Go ahead, sir. Name and address.
Tom Hong, twenty-sixteen East Tyler Street. There was nothing mentioned about the grants. Is there matching funds from the city or any organization or bond? The other thing is that I would like to have explained to the public, as well as myself, the opportunity to attract business means tax deductions so the business comes here. What's the adverse effect that's, that's having around the, around the state and around the country where the bidding war to have manufacturing come back to the area means, how much are you gonna lower my taxes? How much are you gonna give me? And what's the deal if I hire one hundred people? What's the deal if I hire fifty people? Or what's the deal if I bring a large plane in and fill the apple plane or fill one of these containers? These are the things that have to be explained to the public, not just a general overview of, oh, we're planning to do this, we're planning to do that. And over the last year, we've accomplished entrepreneurs in restaurants failing because we didn't do enough. I mean, those are the things that I think should be explained before we invest money in what's going to happen to this program. So if someone could follow up on the questions and have those answered to the amount of money that it's going to take and how it's gonna be divided up and what's the cost to the community. It's nice to get a grant, but nothing was mentioned on, on the things that I'm interested in as far as how many people are gonna come in, what's the average pay, so the wage tax goes. I mean, this is the stuff that should be discussed, not just an overall plan of, I'm gonna be a do-gooder and nothing happens. We haven't seen any results from, so far of manufacturing coming. We have little restaurants, a couple of businesses that couldn't make it. But I need more information before I could vote.
Do you want to take a stab at that?
Well, the first part, the first part that you asked about is, are matching funds required? Based upon our conversation with a representative from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, for this particular program, or grant rather, or matching funds are not required. So to answer maybe the second part of this gentleman's question is that this thing, there's no matching funds, essentially, we're not using, you know, direct city monies within the program. Regarding the second part that you asked about, this focus is presumably focused on business retention and expansion. I think people underestimate the importance that we need to continue to invest time and effort with our existing manufacturers. These are the guys that we don't want to lose to other cities that may have better tax incentives. So I know you was focusing on the aspect of retention or rather recruitment of new businesses, manufacturing businesses. But this program itself is focused on retaining the existing businesses, focusing on what are the challenges that they're facing in terms of workforce issues, space expansion, et cetera.
Would you be willing to sit down with Mr. Hong as a citizen of Allentown to discuss some of the concerns he has?
Absolutely. Our doors are always open in the Department of Community and Economic Development to discuss any item and, you know, bounce ideas off of one another.
I think that would be a good idea.
Absolutely.
Anybody else from the public? Seeing none, Mr. Hammond, call vote on R-ten.
Okay, hold on. R-ten, Mr. McGuire.
Yes.
Ms. Moda.
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell.
Yes.
Ms. Zappa.
Yes.
Mr. Greedy.
Yes.
Hendricks.
Yes.
Mr. McLean.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Diaz.
Thank you.
I appreciate you coming around. Mr. Hammond, ordinance for introduction, Bill One.
Bill One is men's Article one-two-three-point-oh-nine, appointments by the mayor by establishing the same residency requirements for the position of managing director that apply to the department's directors under the provisions of the Home Rule Charter. Note, the managing director does not need to be a resident of the city at the time of appointment, but after the appointment shall resign. The city residency shall be required within twelve months of being appointed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. And comments from my colleagues about Bill One? Mr. Greedy, go ahead.
I just, I'm just supporting this bill and I think it's really wonderful power, good, that we make this a real law that takes effect throughout as soon as possible. The more people that work in the city and live in the city, the better the city will be, and I'm all for that. Fortunately, we have much of the people who work in the city who do not live in the city, which is not good for our city.
And I echo that. I think being in a commander position, such as managing director, who is very, very close, some, probably some people think it's the second highest level in city government, being a manager, I think it's very imperative that, Mr. Greedy said, that person lives in the city, believes in the city, spends his money in the city, and so forth, and pays taxes in the city. Ms. Moda, go ahead.
I'm also a sponsor of this bill, but I also think that it's extremely important that we hire from within. But I mean, within, it is important that we look for people that live in the city of Allentown. Because I really believe that we have a lot of people who qualify, who are well-qualified, you know, to have positions like this. It is extremely important, once again, that we hire from within. Thank you.
Thank you, very well said. Any other comments from my colleagues? Comments from the public about Bill One? Seeing none, Mr. Hammond, we refer this to Committee of the Whole next Wednesday at six P.M., January eleventh. Bill Two, Mr. Hammond, read Bill Two.
Bill Two admits the two thousand seventeen general fund, liquid fuels, Drexler Risk Management, Solid Waste, Stock Course, and nine-one-one fund budgets to include the contractual obligations recently agreed to with SEIU and the agreement made with Mesa that provides for staffs and it provides for the medical opt-out benefit by placing those funds into a new account.
Okay, thank you, sir. Comments from my colleagues about Bill Two? Comments from the public about Bill Two? Seeing, comments from the public, Bill Two?
Can you, can you? Can you explain this anymore?
I sort of have a Committee of the Whole next week to get into the details and nitty-gritty, but I mean, I thought maybe the president of the SEIU wanted to say something. But okay, okay, no problem. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no comments from the public, Mr. Hammond, Bill Two would be referred to Committee of the Whole again next Wednesday, January eleventh at six o'clock, or thereabouts. Okay. Bill Three, Mr. Hammond.
Bill Three admits a two thousand seventeen budget adopted on December seventh, two thousand sixteen, implement various budgetary changes related to salaries, salary ranges, executive positions, premium pay, and the account forty-six.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hammond. And Bill Three, I'll make the comment. Bill Three refers to the compromise that we had in an executive session on December twenty-second, it was, with the mayor and members of city council. We got our solicitor there and we had basically a retired federal mediator, mediator, Judge Edward Kahn. And so, and then I said to Mr. Hartzell earlier, Mr. Hartzell, the bill in itself is very, you know, very vague. We need some numbers, what we had, where they at now, you know, our DIT, where we had, you know, talk about the positions that were defunded and put back in. All the nitty-gritty that needs to go from there, the premium pay, the account, account six, account forty-six, all that stuff. Gotta get that out to the public and let them, you know, let them take a bite, bite at it.
Agreed.
Thank you, sir. Any comments from my colleagues again? Any comments from the public about Bill Three? Mr. Travel, go ahead.
Just real briefly.
That's fine.
Robert Crawford, nineteen-twenty Wydell Street, Allentown. I'm very much, I very much want to thank council for negotiating this. I appreciate it very much. My question is a technical question. It seemed to me from the morning call accounts that council reviewed and agreed informally to present this budget to the, to the city as a motion and the executive session, I assume with the solicitor present. And my question is, under, under section seven oh eight of the sunshine law, everything has to be open to the public except for certain recognized exceptions. And, you know, I thought you might make a comment about that.
You, what's your question? Your question would be to me, your question to me would be?
What would be the exception?
Your question to me was, would be, was the sunshine law violated?
Yeah, what would be the exception?
We will turn it over to the solicitor and we'll get a response from the solicitor. If not tonight, we'll get it for you in the near future. Go ahead, sir. Mr. Kamcho, go ahead.
Just as a quick...
Go ahead.
...question. Because there were two city council members present, the official meeting's definition wasn't meant for the sunshine law. If there was an official action, but alternatively to that, because of the fact that this was a negotiation handled between the administration and city council with the solicitor present, that would fall under one of the enumerated categories of section seven oh eight. And at a minimum, I believe that Mr. President is already qualified or at least given, is the passive threshold of giving the purpose of that executive session. So obviously, the substance of the bill will be negotiated and discussed at the next city council meeting, which is hoping to public scrutiny.
That's fine. Am I to understand that there were only two people present?
Of city council?
I mean, at the executive session, discussing the agreement. Is that, am I making sense?
You asked how many city council people were there?
At the executive session.
Myself as president and Mr. Hendricks as vice president, the officers of city council who were represented in the entire city council.
And I appreciate your efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Travel. Okay, resolutions for introduction, we have none. Good and Welfare? I do have something for Good and Welfare, being that this is our city of Allentown. I'd like to congratulate Doug Snyder for his board of wings with the Allen High Basketball Team. He's now up to four oh two, and I see Coach Kaminsky out there coached with Doug Snyder for many years. I'm sure he would echo the same sentiment. And also, too, Allen High School, no, not from Durham, but Central Catholic High School. We love Central Catholic and Durham High School. But Allen High School is now ranked number one in the state of Pennsylvania in sixth A basketball. So, the more we can do for Allen, Durham, and Central Catholic... The more we can do for Allen, Deer, and Central Catholic, you know, they're our city schools. Let's do it. Anything else for good and welfare? Seeing none. New business, Ms. Sappa, you have something for new business?
Yes, I do. This is not the first complaint I got from landlords, but I had to address this tonight in front of council and Ken. I know, and I appreciate what you do for the tenants. This gentleman has a home, has a rental property, evicted someone, and his question is, what do we do to protect landlords? We have talked about this before, about how many tenants ruin properties in the city, and the landlords are constantly putting, getting put down for not repairing it, so they can repair over and over. Even in my block, I've seen many times, they repair things, and within six months to a year, it could look like this. I'd like you to look to see when this gentleman came in after they were evicted, this is what his property looked like. There was not a thing wrong with it before he rented. I don't know if that's a real gun or a play gun or whatever, but there is a gun that appears to be milk all over. Look at the appliances. This is the way this landlord, who is a decent landlord, and all his properties have always passed inspections. This is what he saw when he got into his property. And his question is, how does the city, or who is there out there to protect the landlords? My question to you, Ken, is, I know you do a lot for the tenants, but do you ever, or do any of your people in your association, ever look at the renters and what they're doing to the properties? Do you ever get an opportunity to look into them and see what actually happens? This is going on all around town, and we always badgering the landlords. And yes, we do have some bad landlords, but a lot of them started off as good landlords and wound up saying, you know, "I really don't care anymore." And this is a good example. Yes, you can reply.
Yeah, we turn down tenants all the time. We know that a lot of tenants use us as a lever's tool against the landlord. We turn down tenants all the time. Things like this, you know, like you live like a pig, whatever happens to you gets evicted, it's certainly evicted. Reality is, though, that is what a security deposit is for, repairs, cleanup.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Security deposit is meant to make the repairs happen and clean up.
You've got to be kidding me. There's not enough security deposit to absolutely...
Well, landlords also could do something else, but they don't. A lot of times, they don't give a lease. A lot of times, they don't put in that lease that they'd like to make quarterly or five yearly inspections. At the six-month point, you can walk in and say, "Holy cow, what are you doing with my place?" Instead of waiting until the year's up and being like, "Oh, my God," or seven years is up and the place is completely destroyed.
So, I agree with you that I am a landlord, and I have to inspect once a year. I don't need to inspect much more because I'm living right next door. These are all good ideas for the landlords, but you can have a year's lease, but people leave, and they leave like this. I see you all trucks all over Allentown, and many men... This isn't the first one. This is the one that just got me to the point where I had to address this at city council. And let the people know. And I appreciate what you do for the tenants, but you and I have agreed before. I'd just like to know, in what way, yes, of course, we can educate them and say, "Listen, you've got to inspect, but you inspect, in six months, that place could look like that." They probably did that the minute they evicted. And asked them to on the way out. This is what they do. It's happened many, many times before. And I don't know what we can do, but what can the tenant association do to help out landlords? Educate them to...
We have, we have, many landlords, we have a lot of landlords that call us for help, put this person to against the tenant that's in there. And, you know, again, a lot of these landlords, and I'm not saying this guy is one of them, but there are so many landlords that don't require a lease. They just take the money, and that's it. You're already to put yourself in a disadvantage. Pretending to self-disadvantage is so big, the landlord.
But there are many that don't.
But they also need to come up with better leases. Some of these leases they got are so, are pathetic, the way they're outlined. They don't, they don't hold the tenant accountable, really. When you breathe the whole lease all the way through, there's a lot of, you know, big words from lawyers that actually, lawyers don't have any teeth for it, don't hold any accountability. I believe a landlord who, first of all, the landlord doesn't live in the county, it's supposed to have an acting agent. Most of them don't. But they're supposed to. They should really be inspecting the place at six months' span. And if they come in there at six months, they say, "This place is immaculate," and they keep resigning lease, then they don't have to do that every six months. But you know what? They should.
Do you have dialogue with landlords at all, being in the tenant association? Maybe these are some of the things that, I don't know, as council or Allentonians, or how we could help out the landlord. But this man lives in town, he has four of the buildings, he has had inspection, it's not hut house, it's not... And this is not the first one. I get a lot of these. And I'm just, I just want to know if you do, you have contact with landlords, and can they come to you at times and say, "Listen, I have this tenant who is really, I know you're a tenant association. Is there anything that you can do, come to us, come to..." Is there any way you can help out? Because I know you've come here, and I'm glad that you showed us all the properties that are so bad and all the slum lords. But there are so many people out there that create things like this.
There are not a lot of things out there. I mean, we walk into places and walk out, and two seconds later, you want to hurry up now, we need help yourself first. You know, we go in these places, and then talk about, you know, cockroaches. You look around, and there's food, and for like three weeks, you'll land in the corner. I mean, it's ridiculous on these people. I understand this happens all the time, and it's unfortunate. But landlords also could do a little bit better themselves, especially ones that live in the city. They can drive past your building and see there's something going on, but just the outside of the building...
A lot of times, it's when they're evicting them, because they have maybe 30, 60 days, and this is exactly... I'm a property owner, Gerald's property, there's a lot of us that, and we know, Julio, we know that this could happen in many times. We don't have any protection. This is what this person says. Who protects us?
Well, you know, Allentown Metro does, is actually, when they do evict somebody, the day you're evicted, they sort of monitor and watch them walking out, because they know this happens. You know this happens. People get mad, upset. You know, they're hurried, snatched off, who cares, because I'm not here anyway. They already got the money, so... But I mean, hire a security deposit, too.
Okay, I just wanted you to be aware of it, and the public to be aware of the fact that it's not just the landlords, that to be aware of tenants that you have in your properties, and of course, what Ken said, and I do, I inspect my properties, but there could be just someone that you just evicted, and many times it happens. But I just wanted the public to be aware of this, because we're always listening to the landlords, slum lords. But we have many, many tenants that create slums. I mean, thank you for staying.
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Sappa. Anything else for new business? Seeing none. Motion to adjourn. So moved, common consent. Have a good evening.